We're now on to our action items. First item is resolution regarding classified reduction or discontinuance of services for 1516. Superintendent, do you want to introduce the item?
Yes, I do, thank you. The purpose of this is to provide notice to classified staff of layoffs not later than 60 days prior to the date of the effective layoff. As you may know, and those of you in the crowd may know, the governor has published a May revise to his budget. That revise is going to result in additional funding for schools. However, and that's going to, that does help us in some ways, but we still have to really proceed with caution. It is really imperative, I think, for us as a community to work together to increase enrollment because our, one of our main financial challenges right now as a school district is enrollment. We need to really attract and bring in more students to our school district. However, the May revise does give us a little bit of flexibility right now. So I am changing this resolution and I have put, Ms. Tamer has put in front of you my altered recommendation on the classified layoffs, and that is a change of five FTE instead of seven.
And the difference in the two instead of seven is?
The two instructional aid positions.
Would be maintained.
Would be maintained, that's correct. And I guess I should add that that's based on the current situation. When I say we need to proceed with caution, I really mean it. I think right now it's possible that I could bring this to you and say that, you know, we can proceed with a change of five layoffs instead of seven, but even keeping the two may not be a long-term situation.
Well, I don't want to have a discussion now other than point to the next item, which is the third interim. And I appreciate that you put forth two options for the board and the public to consider. One option being seven, a reduction in all seven, and then the other option being reduction in just five of the seven. So either, as we'll discuss, both options indicate still quite large ongoing deficits in the future either way, but your recommendation is to stomach some of the deficit for a little while longer, at least with respect to, by maintaining two of the instructional aids.
That's correct.
Okay. Why don't we go to public comment unless there are any sort of pressing questions or issues from the board first? Okay, do we have a public comment on this item?
Good evening, I'm Kathy Rollins and I am the CSCE staff person who, as I said last time, has the honor to work with this district and this chapter. And I have to say that we're somewhat in the same place that we were at the last meeting in that we don't have additional information from the district. We're hoping, or we were hoping that you all would have made sure that that information is out. So if I could remind you on the issues that we had, we wanted to understand how it is the district will function with only one manager and no one else to do fiscal services in this district. We wanted to know how eight hours of work for an office manager is going to be absorbed by people remaining. We wanted to understand with other people absorbing other work, how the data coordinator things would get done. And also, all of the services that the after-school program person is currently doing, who's going to do that. Last meeting, there had been an indication that there was going to be a meeting with CSCE that Friday, and it was canceled, and we have not received any information. We don't understand how the board can go forward with cuts without there being discussion about who will do the work, how will it get done. Honestly, at the last meeting, the gentleman who just came in made a comment that he thought with the building of a new facility that that was going to enable the district to cut positions. And while that might be something down the road, currently, when we've asked about the impact of things like that, we're told we don't know. There's been no discussion. So tell us how you can, and the superintendent can continue to manage within the so-called guidelines that you have listed here in terms of the professional expectations, a sense of family and all of that, and there's still no information about how this work is going to get done. And yes, we're very concerned about the work that our members are currently doing, but we're also very concerned about the welfare of the district and the student because part of our commitment is to see that the community and students thrive as well as our people being employed. So we would hope that you would have more information provided before you ask for a vote. Additionally, last time, we had mentioned that it was difficult for a layperson to look at the proposed budget and understand what really was being changed there. And again, there aren't specific things that make it clear. So in part of having this discussion, we hope that you'll provide information that will, one, make us feel like it makes a difference to you all, that you know that there's a plan in place, that there isn't simply discussion going on behind the scenes, and that our people are really being fairly looked at for the contributions they're making. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comment?
Good evening, hello, good evening, board. My name is Jac, a little taller. My name is Jacqueline Adams and I am the Emory Secondary School Office Manager, but unfortunately today, I am one of, now it seems like, five classified employees whose position is being eliminated due to what I am thinking potential fiscal insolvency. I did not attend the last board meeting on May 15th, but I did watch it on YouTube the day after. I wanted to first say thank you, board, for not just making a decision quickly, but requesting more information about these recommendations because when it comes down to eliminating these positions, all at one time and in haste, it seems like, it does lead to who is going to do the work? Who is going to provide the services to the students like classified staff provide? I, as a classified staff, regularly go out of my way to ensure that the students can focus on their studies versus having to worry about bullying or fighting with another group of students. I daily mentor students on how to be an upstanding adult in training. Every day, I am a mother, a father, a sister, a brother to these students, trying to create a sense of family for these students. What about the students? What is going to happen when seven of us are gone and the classified staff whom remain are so overworked and spread like butter over too many loaves of bread? What is going to happen when not only the clerical work that is consistent, but the support and attention we give these two students daily, most of whom have no one else to talk to? Parents bring their students to Emory every day under the impression that is what we are creating, that sense of family, but the sense of family has been deteriorating for years. I started as a food service sub, worked at the Emoryville Child Development Center, worked in the Wellness Department, and with Emory Ed Fund before landing in the Office Manager position three years ago, but I was in the district far more. What intrigued me to move around and explore the inner workings of the district was because, and like our Emory parents, was intrigued by the sense of family that we had. With declining enrollment being said as the rationale behind these current classified cuts, I can almost guarantee it is not the stellar programs and/or the promise of a new site facility that make these students want to stay here, but they stayed for the staff, which include the classified, and the sense of family that is unique to Emory. Classified staff are multifunction by definition, especially when the district is small. We all wear many hats consistently and on a daily basis. We have lost many key employees and were never replaced, and no conversations had about whom is going to do their work, and in the natural order of things in this district, it falls on the classifieds laps. So I have said all of this to say this: to have this proposal on the docket without any conversation or any intervention about what we really do and not have a plan on the outcome is not the best practice. Outside of the $495,000 you're saving from us being eliminated, what is your desired outcome you are hoping to attain next? May God bless and keep us all, keep us all.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Additional public comment?
Good evening, Emory Unified School District family, friends, and school board members. My name is Brenda Collins. I was not able to attend the last school board meeting. I was in Monterey helping my daughter, Brittany, who's sitting right here, prepare to get her degree, which happened last week, so I'm very proud of her. So, and Brittany is an Emory alumni, high school president, and she is here tonight to help me with a couple of things. But before I left for this amazing milestone in our life, I was verbally notified the Friday before Mother's Day that my position with the Emory Unified School District would be one of the positions considered for termination. Before making any decisions based on what I think the district is having you believe is my job description, I would like for you to see for yourself, at your convenience, to please take a moment to review what is actually my job functions in this district. However, I am only hearing conversations about my position as after-school coordinator, which is 30% of my weekly duties, which is also an ongoing grant-funded position. However, my main concern is the job description that has been placed before the school board in writing, which is only the after-school coordinating. In all due respect, it is a misrepresentation of my job duties and functions in this district. I am not sure why the district is not reflecting the 70% of my job function, which is Student Activities Coordinator/ASB Advisor, in any conversations. It appears to me that they are making it look as if it is nonexisting, and wow, this is quite mind-blowing for me. Why? Because I have been serving in this position for quite a few years now. I have a question to myself: is it a belief on the school board's behalf that they will only be terminating the after-school coordinator position, or will they, or are you also aware that you will be eliminating the Student Activities Coordinator as well as the ASB Advisor, which are under the Ed Code? The answer is a mystery to me, and I don't want the truth to go unspoken or to be misrepresented by what you might think is in writing. We are the soldiers, and my question to Emory Unified School District is, all of us make your army, and how can you fight a war without your army complete?
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Yes, additional comment, please?
Unlike my colleagues, I didn't come here, and if I get a little emotional, my story will tell why, I didn't come here with a prepared statement because what I speak of is the passion that I have carried for this district for 12 years. April 23rd made it 12 years. I have survived seven superintendents, two state administrators, several board meetings, five principals, yet I'm still here. I'm here because of the passion and the dedication that I have given to this district. And it's not to exclude what my colleagues have done, but just to give you an idea, on day one, I was told, we're a small district and you're going to do more than be just an attendance clerk. You're going to do more than be just an instructional assistant. You're going to do more than be a registrar, a data coordinator. Those are titles I've held in the 12 years. On top of cheer coach, softball coach. To give you an idea of my passion, I've been a softball coach for this district for years. This year, I did it unpaid because that was my passion. It wasn't to get paid, it was to be here for our children. Those are my babies. I've graduated, this year will be my 13th class that I'm walking out of here. My daughter is a part of that class. My son was a part of last year. I have a 10th grader that I pulled out of a pristine charter school to be a part of this Emory family. I've got Emory babies in the audience, class of '08. I know, I know my classes, I know my kids. We boast, on the average, because I'm the registrar and data coordinator, I know how many children we get in here. I know how many children I personally recruited, which is what we need to focus on. In the three years, the past three years, the only people who have went out there and stomped pavement so that we wouldn't be at this juncture right now has been your classified staff at the high school. Brenda Collins, Jackie Adams, Deiso Quardier, Valerie Walker, we stomped the pavement from Richmond to Fremont to get our numbers at, when we moved to the 54th Street, we were at 242. In my 12 years I've been here, we have never bounced below 200. We boast 180 kids. 50 of them are walking across the stage in two weeks. What are you going to do? What are you going to do? You're going to cut more people? You're going to sacrifice lives? You're going to sacrifice jobs? I have to tell you a heartbreaking story because, like I said, it's my passion for this district. I boast to my children, nothing less than a C, keep that GPA above 3.0, and you can go anywhere in life, anywhere. My daughter, who was crossing the stage in three, two weeks, she did that until the Friday before my Mother's Day, and I'm the mother of 180 students, not three. And if you want me to count the 12 years, I'm the mother of all of those classes because every one of them, when they see me on the street, they say, "Hey, Mom, how you doing?" She got accepted to Portland State, but on the Friday before my Mother's Day, I had to tell her she couldn't go because the people that I gave 12 years of my life to, 12 years of her life to, took my job away, took my passion away, took their passion away. And you know what she said? Mama, that's their loss because you gave all you could. I gave blood, I gave sweat, I gave tears, and I still give. There isn't a kid in this audience that doesn't have my personal cellphone number that can call me any time of day. I'm Facebook friends with 1,100 students. My name is in Oakland Unified, Berkeley Unified, and they're all kids because at the end of the day, your budget, the deficit, no books, no supplies, that's not what counts. These babies are the ones that are going to take care of you when it's time to retire. I love you, Brenda. At the end of the day, it's about these babies. I walked around for eight years without a raise, still paying the same mortgage because it wasn't about the money. It wasn't about the money, it wasn't about the benefits, it was about these babies. And it's still about these babies. And when I walk out that door on June 23rd, guess what? I'm a Spartan till I die. I rock blue and gold on a regular. I am a lady Spartan till I die, and I'll be back.
Thank you, thank you. Other public comment, please?
How's everybody doing tonight? Again, my name is Harjit Singh. I talked to the board last, what, maybe two weeks ago, so I don't want to reiterate, rephrase everything, say it again, I guess it's the same story being told by everybody. But we would actually like you some closure. There's a lot of stress being held in everybody's minds, a lot of tension, causing a lot of tension to families as well. Today, the privilege, there's other students that are here that have been taught by all these classified staff, Mrs. Walker, Ms. Plaha, Brenda, Mrs. Collins, some, Ms. Adams, there you go, okay. Ms. Dunn, too, she's here, I can name a lot of people. That gentleman right there, he also graduated, now he's a successful businessman right there, owns his own mechanic business. All I want to say is, we'd actually just like a final decision today, I mean, whatever you guys find is good, so I can go home and be less tense, stress-free, because this is causing me a lot of stress, and I don't stress normally. I got a gray hair last week. Sorry about that, everybody have a good night.
All right, thank you.
My name is Misha, and I'm here to talk to everyone again about the classified staff. But more importantly, I want to talk about the budget that was presented at the end of the last board meeting. One of the things that I don't understand is that there's been an increase in benefits, but that was never really gone into detail. I see in the last year's compared to what's proposed for next year, there's about an increase of $457,000, and I just want to know what that increase is going towards because that hasn't been disclosed, but I do know that the cuts that were proposed at the last, at the end of the last meeting was around $400,000. So I would like some clarity about that. And another thing that was talked about at the last meeting, if you remember, was the signing bonuses that the district gives out to encourage other teachers to come to the district. But I feel like that's hard to do because the kind of employee morale that's in the district now, it's really hard to have an effective, productive staff if you don't feel like you're part of a family and you're not secure about your job because you may be let go at any point in time. So, you know, I understand the funding comes from a certain place, as we were told last time, but regardless of whether there's funding, I know there's plenty of staff here that is here now because they have a job, but because of the low morale that's here, they may, may not want to stay. So, and based on the comments that we've heard, I feel like a lot of the sense of community is breaking at this point. And I just feel like there's been, there has to be strategic cuts that need to be made, but at the same time, it feels like based on the positions that were proposed to be cut or that are going to be cut, the district is still proposing hiring new staff next year, but it doesn't feel like it's a cut of positions, it's a cut of people. So we're rearranging people and getting people that we want or that we don't need. So I just encourage that for the community, for the students here, for everybody's morale to be high that there's transparency in the budget, in the operations, in the hiring and firing practices. Thank you.
Good evening, board and other members. I just wanted to come before you all this evening in regards to the job description as well as the item on the docket. In regards to that, I have been in the school district as a student, as a present alumni now, since 2005, so for the past decade, and I have seen the frivolous work that these individuals have displayed and illustrated upon us as students, as well as throughout this community as a whole. And as our guiding principle is creating a sense of family, I have endured that nature of a family, not only from having my own mother in regards to this position as a classified employee, but also my extended family as of Ms. Walker, Ms. Adams, Ms. Plaha, and other recipients on the docket as well. So I just wanted to let you all know, to take in regards to the simple fact, as a family, you don't let each other down, you always have each other's backs, and there's always been a guiding principle as a school president of the class of 2010. I definitely understood that value and seeing everyone in their sentiment values as well tonight, I definitely would like to basow upon you the idea that you just have to take in consideration not only the money, but you have to take into consideration people's feelings, the feelings of the students, the feelings of the classroom. I'm not sure if any of you have ever sat into any of the classrooms, but today I did. I sat in on two classes. I was not satisfied at all, just in terms of the effort that the participants or this classmates had because of the lack of love that they felt in that classroom, because there is a lack of love and emotion due to the simple fact of the docket item that you all have been discussing. So I just wanted to let you know that it is a reciprocal effect. It does not only go upon just financial issues, but it also goes upon emotions and that sense of family as our guiding principle and as our guiding leaders of the Board of Directors. I definitely want you to understand that this will have a ripple effect and that this can definitely be resolved in a matter of allowing our family to become whole and to keep everyone as one. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment on this item?
Good evening, board. I was not prepared to come to this meeting at all. I was, I was told to come here, I was asked to come here by Ms. Brenda, Ms. Collins, and it's really, really, really crazy how the classified staff is about to be terminated or could be terminated from their positions because of a cutback. We have a whole new building being built right now, and we have seven or five people being cut. I don't, I just don't think it's fair. Ms. Walker, if any one of my friends, myself included, if we were, let's say, cutting class or where we're supposed to be, Ms. Walker's right there and she's going to really get us back to class, words and all. Ms. Plaha, I've known Ms. Plaha since elementary school. There's really absolutely no reason for her to be in this position at all, at all. Ms. Collins, the funniest, brightest, always smiling person in the world. This is really, really not, this is really unacceptable. I can't believe we're sitting right here, I was told we're going to a meeting about, you know, about the school district, but really it's about the most outstanding staff that you have. It's just really not a good idea to at least attempt to, you know, terminate these classified, as you say, staff. The classification is way above par, past par, and it's just crazy how I don't see not one pin being lifted, except for one, and that's on this little tablet, but you guys aren't taking any notes. These, these classified staff are the best staff that you're going to, that you're ever going to have. They have a different type of respect from the kids, a whole different type of respect. I wouldn't dare speak back to any of the classified staff that you have. My mom wasn't at school every day, but Ms. Collins was at school, Ms. Walker was at school, Ms. Hessel, if I stepped foot on that concrete without Ms. Hessel being right there, it's going to be a big problem. Ms. Hessel, that's all I have to say. I just can't believe that we're right here right now.
Any further public comment on this item?
Good afternoon, Audrey Miles, kindergarten teacher, Anna Yates.
Board, when we talk about the fact that we're getting additional $3,000 this year, I see this more of being a, not so much as a budget issue, but as an enrollment issue. What I've seen for the last two years is a constant decline in our high school enrollment. It almost feels like we've stopped worrying about what's present and worrying about what new ECL will look like. That's what it feels like to all of us. I remember sitting in a staff meeting and feeling like those of us that have been in the trenches, those of us who walk the pavement, spoke to people in the community to get the bond measure passed, to get that ECL built. I sat, I was one of the people you often ask to speak at the city schools meeting. I went out to some, a many of the community meetings to speak to encourage the bond measure. We are the people that were in the trenches that helped to make sure that the new school is built. And yet many of us feel like we're being pushed out. We feel like we're not what, many of us feel that when it comes time for ECL to be there, many of us won't be there, you know? And so if that's the case, why are we not looking at what enrollment is now? Why are we not out recruiting students? You're saying you recruit, I saw something in the City Council Bulletin where we're out recruiting for ECL. Why are we not out recruiting for the current school that we have now? We let our enrollment get down under 189? I see that as a problem. It's like we decided, well, we're not going to do anything until, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but when you look at what's happening in the community, people are looking at that. Why am I going to send my child to a school where there's only 189 students? There are no programs, they have nothing to offer the students at the Emory Secondary School? If we're truly saying that we are a sense of family and that we're building our enrollment, we should be building our enrollment now with programs and encouraging them by saying, these are the things that we are going to continue to focus on as we move into the ECL. When we started off the year this year, we started off with no principal and it went downhill from there, okay? It just felt like all of a sudden, we, everything that was good about Anna Yates, they just took it and threw it away. It's like it wasn't good. We didn't get to be an 815 school by not doing what was right. We were up and our scores were moving and yet everything that was established procedure and program at Anna Yates got thrown in the water. What was wrong with it? Nothing. You got good teachers, you got good staff. All of that helped to build who we were as a school, who we are as a school. We weren't, we're not dead, we're still here. But some days it feels like that because it doesn't seem like our voice is heard. And so what we're asking is looking at not staff, but looking at programs. Looking at what we can do to build, so that when we're ready, and we've had several meetings, several, several meetings, where we sat and talked about what ECL will look like, what the vision of ECL will look like, you know? So we should be taking those visions right now and applying them and working with the staff that we have to develop the programs so that when we move in, we can hit the ground running. That's what I see. That's what we said when we sat in all those hours and hours and hours of meeting, to develop what the programs will look like. So I think taking a second look at this year and working for it, and I understand this might be short-term, but I think the goal should be to work on enrollment and work on program so that we can entice good students to come to Emory Secondary and keep the students that we're having at Emory, at Anna Yates Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Other public comment? Okay, I'm closing. Public comments on this item? Board member comments and thoughts? Member Pats, before you walked in. Superintendent, yeah, revised the resolution to propose a cut of five, not seven, eliminating the cut of the two instructional aids.
So I want to apologize for being late this evening and I was not able to make it to the special meeting last night because of work obligations, nor to the finance committee. So if I'm a little behind on some of these things, I apologize. But I do want to talk about what you guys had to say because I thought it was very powerful and I did take notes. And I'll start with you since you called me out and I will, you know, I hope you and Mr. Singh, and you didn't give your name, so I don't know it. I hope you and Mr. Singh are still in Emeryville and start participating more in the, I'd like to see you on this side of the dais. I think we need more young people involved and I'd love to see that. So I'm going to throw that out there. I know that's not related to the topic and I apologize for wandering. You know, and I, as you spoke, I, particularly the last speaker, Langston Hughes came to mind and, you know, I agree with you. It's, anytime we defer something, it's a denial and I always worry about that. And so that just rattled in my head. And then I want to correct the first speaker who was here, and I'm going to phrase, I want to correct myself. If I said that, what I meant to say or what I intended to be heard was that part of the plan that I'm concerned with has always been this idea that by moving to a single site, we take away some key members of our community. And I worry about that and I don't know that this is the end because we talk about savings as we move into a single site. So that's, that's what I meant last week and I apologize for not articulating that well. But I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I've been speaking at the last two board meetings about spending $60,000 a year on Townsend and I just want to know, is that still in the budget or have we finally gotten rid of that? It's in the budget? Removal is? So we are dropping that contract?
Do you want me to respond to that? It's, I don't know if this is directly related, I assume it is, but the answer is yes. We are cutting that contract.
Okay.
We're continuing to look, you know, I feel, I don't feel good about these cuts because they involve people and people who have given many years. So I don't want you to think that I have some enjoyment at all at any level for this. And we continue to look at our budget. We're continuing to look at staffing and certificated. We're continuing to look at everything we can.
Because that was an important thing for me and I just, looking at the budgets because we're doing this and that, I just want to throw a number out there. Per ADA, which is 93% of our students, we have more students than show up every day, we spend $1,400 on administrative salaries. And so I just want to throw that out there between classified and certificated based on the budget that's out there now. I think part of that's because we're a small district, but I also wonder if that's not where we want to look to make cuts. The contracts, we are getting better on, I'll end on a positive note. That was one of the few, first things I looked at is the contracting. And in the 13, 14 year, we spent over a million dollars. We're on pace this year to only spend a quarter of a million, which is a significant decrease and I'd like to see it gone down by even more. And so I think that's at least a positive. So those are some of my thoughts on this.
Other thoughts from the side of the dais?
Well, I guess my, none of these are easy, simple decisions and as was presented in the first May 15 meeting or whatever, two weeks ago from today, these are decisions that have to be made, unfortunately. I think there, I don't know how clear it's been, but there's been a number of funding streams that have no long, that dried up or grants that were providing support for a number of positions that no longer exist, that we basically, if I'm getting this right, the general fund was taking the burden of keeping that whole. So enrollment is absolutely the challenge of this district and it's not a new thing, but it's definitely at an all-time problem, I'll say. So having a plan and knowing what exactly we will do is, has got to be priority number one. And at the same time, because of the third interim situation, which unfortunately I'm too familiar with because there's been a number of, and probably, I'm probably that much more conservative, but that's the path leading to state receivership in my book. If you can't show that the district can remain solvent after a number of years, you are looking at potential, going back to what the district was in 2001, 2002, when I first got on the board. So I don't think we want that at all, but at the same time, we're at a right-now phase is my, is how I'm feeling right now. I don't like any of these cuts. I don't think they're, I do believe in the sense of family, I absolutely do. But I also hope that decisions made today aren't only things that we're looking at. We just can't, I don't think this board can afford to be about cuts and not about, because it sounds like state administration. That's how it was when I was, when I first came in. Everything was removed, everything was stripped. There was no heart to the district until literally being able to come out of state receivership because the softness of being a district wasn't part of what the state's priorities was, was just to be a solvent district. They not, they don't care about after-school, they don't care. I mean, that's what the state does. They're trying to operate with the right funds, expenses and what's coming in. So that's how they operate and we don't need to be that. I don't think that's the goal for me as a board member and I don't think that represents the board's direction. But I do know that we have to make a change at this point in the road. We do have the opportunity to, because of some additional funding that's highlighted in what the custodial staff, I think was the other one, that we have this year and next year, but we don't have year three. We can't look for, you know, beyond that, we'll have to figure out another way. So in terms of your comment as it relates to, this is a short-term, I won't say short-term proposal, but this is, we have to work on the longer-term issue, which is enrollment, so.
Right. I'd like to expand for the public on something Member Dice said. We found a way legally to move the custodian salaries this year and next year and then the law changes. We can move those salaries out to a different type of money that doesn't run operations and salaries. And it's a good thing we did because if we didn't, I wouldn't have been able to change my recommendation tonight. So, and I'm not sure it would have been only seven, you know, I don't know what it would have been. So just so you understand her comments, that is one other thing we were able to do in the last few weeks that has helped us, but it's temporary. And if you look two years out, which will be on the budget presentation, we are going to be back into a structural deficit again. So this does not clear us out of the woods.
Now, this is very, very tough on everyone here in this room and through the community and I can't fathom what goes through people's minds when they hear that they're being let go. And it is a very, very gut-wrenching experience. I think, I don't know if everyone has experienced that, I've experienced and I think it's a really hard, hard issue to overcome. I do want to mention that I do appreciate everyone's contribution to the community and to every single student that's been through Emory. Although being new to the community to a degree, I understand and take into account everything that's been said tonight and the previous meetings as well. It did not fall on deaf ears and I believe we've applied enough to sway some and change some minds regarding the severity. And I think that's what you see in some of the movement pertaining to between the seven and the five positions. So I feel for everyone that is affected in this decision. So I don't want to make it feel it's in light or lack of information. So that's how I feel about this issue.
Yeah, this is definitely the hardest part of this essentially volunteer position, is having to look at the budget, look at what we need to do to keep moving forward fiscally and let people go. There's no doubt about it. And I definitely feel, feel sorry to have to be the one that has to be part of a vote to let anyone go. But we are facing a situation where the district is, even with a promising May revise and even with these cuts, still facing a serious structural deficit years out. and I think we all realize that the big issue going forward is enrollment and I think it's in really the hope and the expectation that we will increase enrollment, that we move to only cutting five instead of seven. And we did hear, we did hear you. We are, you know, keeping the two instructional aids because those are the two that are most impacting the classroom. I know that you all impact the students in one way or another, but we have to make some decisions and they're very tough decisions. Because of the, some of the movement and being able to use the custodial out of a building fund for two years and the May revise, we're able, I think, to take a risk that we can only, we can only cut five at this time. I want to emphasize that we are not, we are not an under-resourced district in that we provide more than most districts do on average in the state. We didn't cut back from 180 days a year when most districts did. We didn't, we didn't cut our class sizes away from 20 in K3 when most districts did during the recession. We have a school nurse that serves all our students. We have a full-time librarian that serves the K8. We have an independent science teacher that serves the elementary. Those are all things that most elementary and K12s do not have and are not able to offer. And the state does not adequately fund our public school system. There's no doubt about that. We are, you know, continued to be 46th, 48th, 49th, 50th last year in per pupil funding. But we're where we're at and we're charting a way forward. And the way forward is an expectation that we will be increasing enrollment and that, and is banking on that, that we are not making more serious cuts to the classroom and to our staff at this time. And I trust that we will do that, but we're all going to have to do that together. But I very much want to express my appreciation for the service that we have gotten out of each and every one of our staff, including those that are among the five that are on the current proposal.
Ms. Rollins, yeah. I understand, but Ms. Rollins, you and I agreed several weeks ago to meet together and to bargain that as we legally need to, so that, Ms. Rollins? Right, right, that's what, right. Right, right, that's what, right.
Asking, how do you have one person responsible for seeing all the payroll, health benefits, everything in this district?
That's right, and that's our conversation, to bargain impact, Ms. Rollins.
All right, thank you. We're, Ms. Rollins?
How do we have confidence that the board isn't simply rubber-stamping something? That's what we're asking you. Tell us how this will occur.
We're satisfied as a board that we'll be able to continue to function and meet the basic operations that are required, and that, and I'm not going to get in to...
You'll be satisfied when there hasn't been some information.
Ms. Rollins, your, I appreciate your desire, and we're not going to get into personnel discussions. We're gonna, and we've had public comment on the item.
I'm not asking personnel discussions, but I really want to understand. That's what we asked last time. How is it that the board has confidence to know that you can function? And I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anybody here, but it's very scary, even if you're not one of the five people, on how, how this district is going to function. And I'll be quiet.
Okay, thank you.[1283.83][1283.83][applause]
You have one person.
Is, is there?
Do the job of four full-time people. So we want to, as a parent, now I'm speaking as a parent, I have a child in that.
Ms. Walker, we've, we've had...
How are you going to have one person do the job of four?
Thank you. We've had public comment on the item. It's, it's time for further discussion or a motion, and...
You didn't have, you don't have public comment, but it's supposed to be legal information in the city papers, in the journal, or it is. Who's being laid off? Why? We're supposed to be told this, and what are you going to do with future planning? How are you going to make this job dispersed towards everybody else? You have to have, you have to tell us. It's supposed to be printed. We're supposed to have access to that online. There's no online paper to work, but what's going on? So you have to help us.
Thank you. Do we, do we have a, a motion?
So, just to, just want to visit that. It is a different process. So that is a different process. I do, I hear you. I absolutely understand. I don't believe the board can tell you today what exactly that script is. And I do understand that there are some, this is just my, this is no conversation I've had with my board members in closed session, which we've had, had several closed sessions following the meeting, that actually, Board Member Marion mentioned, that the board has been in discussion about this particular item since that previous meeting. So there had been a, a scope of understanding, especially as it relates to the fiscal pieces, so that part. And also, some of where things could go, but we don't have, in, in front of us today to provide you detail on the work that was captured by this goes here. We don't have that map in, in terms of that. That we don't have. I don't have that. I do have a understanding of what could happen, but it's still a matter of what we have to do. And that's just being, you know, that's just what I have as a board member, and I think that's just representative of things. There are a lot of things we don't know. We can very well, by September or August, have enrollment up by 20 some-odd students, and we'll need to call someone back. And I mean, that's literally what's happened. And, I mean, that happens in general.
We need to hold our leaders accountable for the decisions they made.
I'm sorry, can we, board members, can we?
If we're not having very good, right now, for decisions made, and when are they going to be held accountable?
Gotcha.
So if some of the decisions that they're making, and they still have their jobs, they still have their pool salaries, which are really high, let's start cutting some of the salaries, because we're doing it right here. Right? Let's start making the people accountable for making the bad decisions, helping spending the money, and paying people that don't even work here because of their decisions. But we're the ones who have to be the, the ones accountable. They're not our decisions. So when at some point do we hold our leaders accountable?
Can I ask if there's a motion on the floor?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, but I just, I just had to...
There's no motion on the floor.
Okay.
Nobody's made a motion. There was a call for a motion, but it was not made. You know, I'm, was not able to make the closed session meeting last night, and I was under the impression that was the only closed session meeting.
There was one this morning, I mean, this afternoon, or before this meeting.
But I thought that was on the board training.
No, there was one at 5:30.
Oh. So, okay. So again, I'm, you know, I was in the previous ones, and I thought we'd go over some of these. And I, I had hoped, based on our last meeting, that, that conversation would have happened. And I'm, I'm concerned that it has not. You know, I think, you know, I look down at the, the instructional assistant for PE, and I get that we've hired a PE teacher, or we're going to hire a PE teacher. So at least I can say, share that with you, because I think that's already been made in public. For the other ones, you know, I, yeah, I, if we can justify our decisions to the public, I'm, I'm concerned. So, you know, I just, I, that's, yeah.
I, I guess, I, Member Pats, I'd like to remind you and the board that the financial aspects of the rationale for why we have to do this, I believe justifies it.
It justifies that we have to make cuts. I don't know that it justifies having to make these cuts. That's, there's a difference there. So.
Well, we did discuss this in closed session. We did, and it does get into X person doing Y, and, and we did get an explanation of information from the superintendent about what, how essential duties, what if any essential duties would be covered or not covered, and some may be addressed in further impact negotiations with CSCE. And we do not have a, a line item per line item map, but I do feel sufficiently informed to be able to feel that we do have the duties, the essential duties covered with these cuts. So I'm, that's, that's where I'm at, and I think we have been provided information sufficient to, to make that decision. We're not the CEO. We're not, we're not running the day-to-day operations. We're one level above that. I think we've been given enough information.
So you called the question. I'll move forward with the five, the revised five positions in hopes that we have a long-term strategy of restoring and increasing enrollment. So that's where I'm at.
I will second that. I think that both on this item and on the third interim, that it is incumbent on the district to have a specific target of where we want to go in terms of enrollment for each of the next three years, and that, that, that should be part of our expectations for the superintendent and the staff, because, and the community, because it's more than, than any one person is going to be able to do. But I think we should be quite explicit about what target enrollment we want to hit, at which grade levels. So roll call, Ms. Tamer.
President F. Al.
Yes.
Vice President Dice.
Don't want to, but yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Okay, the motion passes. Again, thank you for your input. The next item, Superintendent, is the approval of the third interim.
Yes, good evening again. So staff is recommend-